I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay. We are straight into consent agendas. We have Oregon Liquor Control Commission request for change of ownership, full on-premise sales, Adams Food Service LLC, DBA Scooter Smokehouse. We have minutes of the meeting June 20th, 2016, minutes of meeting August 15th, 2016, minutes of meeting November 28th, 2016, minutes of meeting December 12th.
December 12th and December 19th warrant in the packet.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna read it anyway. Minutes of meeting December 12th, 2016, minutes of meeting December 19th, 2016, because I'm on a roll.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Now, go ahead.
May I request that we remove items two through six, which are the minutes to off of the consent agenda?
All right. Anyone else? Then we're gonna pull five and six, because they don't exist. Right? Okay. One, two, or three, anybody? Or one or three? One, three, four?
No.
My left.
Is Hinton asked for all the meeting minutes to be removed?
Oh, two through six. I apologize.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Anyone care about number one? Okay. Got a motion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda comprising of number one.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
I would like to discuss that.
Please.
Isn't that change of ownership or business license? Or I don't have, you know, don't quite understand it, so I just...
Okay. Ron, is that something you can fill us in on, or Chief?
I think our recorder is going to do that.
All right.
The Oregon Liquor Control Commission has an application, and the, I believe it was Macadang, Macadang Dames, has changed, it will now be Scooter's Smokehouse. And so they change, liquor license is attached to the property, and so they're asking for a change of ownership on it. So it will now be called Scooter's Smokehouse, or under Adams Food Service LLC, doing business as Scooter's Smokehouse. So they're just requesting a change. The business will be changing, so the liquor license has to change.
And that's different than when, in my only references, like VRDs, on the planning commission, that the license wasn't not transferable. This is not the same as that.
Yes, the liquor license can, it has to go through the approval process at OLCC and with the city both, before someone can take over that liquor license for that address.
Yeah, it's not a straight transfer. It's still gotta be approved by everyone, as if it were a new license. So it's been fully ratified by the chief? A good question.
That was my question.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Motion carries. Counsel Hinton, two through six?
I just would like to abstain from items two, three, and four, because I wasn't on counsel during that time.
I move to approve two, three, and four.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
I'd also like to abstain and not read the minutes, nor did I participate.
I'd like to abstain also. I read the minutes, but I did not participate.
Okay. Well, that still leaves four of us, so if you don't have any objection, we'll vote on that.
Hey, Mayor, I'd like, Counsel Robke, I don't believe that number three is there. I think that one is missing as well. It's only two and four, or, yeah, two and four. Minutes of June 20th and the minutes of November 28th.
There were three attached to the agenda packet, I believe. Ah, I just lost.
I've got fifteen, twenty-eight, twelve, nineteen.
Checking real quick.
I just downloaded that this afternoon.
No, it's a blank for that one, too, so you're only, you're only approving, you said two.
I look at three and three minutes.
Two.
June 20th.
And November 28th.
February 24th is blank.
Thank you.
So it's two and three?
Two and four.
Two and four.
All right, so we're modifying the motion.
I move to approve items two and four of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? I'm gonna briefly just, are we?
No, I'm sorry. Number three is there.
Let's add it. We'll just do our vote here. Ron, this was concerning me, because this was brought up in the audit, in particular about our minutes. Are we, are we up to speed? Is this just a one-time, we're gonna clean it up and get, because we're talking about June?
We are, we are in the process of catching up. We've got some, some help in getting that caught up, so we're in the process of catching up. Now, as it pertains to the audit, we will be addressing that in the resolution that's before you on, how long will it be from each meeting before you have your minutes before you? Which will be 30 days.
All right. And then, anyone else? All in favor say aye. Could, could we?
We've had some, I know that, there's been two motions back and forth. Are we set on which ones we're approving?
Well, the last one I was working on was two and four. But if you wanna withdraw it and then just do two, three, and four, it's easy.
Well, I'm looking to Susan.
What I am seeing in the packet is...
I'm seeing agenda for this meeting. We added five.
Is June 20th and November 28th. So that's numbers three and four.
Two and four.
Okay, I have a earlier version of the agenda, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the confusion.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're still good with the original motion?
Two and four.
Two and four.
Two and four.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no objection. Motion carries. All right. Did I take care of that? With all the consent agenda items? Yes? Okay. Moving on. Comments from citizen present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allotted for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and sign to speak up. Sorry, to speak. I have no list. Does anyone, anyone like to speak who did not sign up? Okay, we're moving on. Presentations, none. Public hearings, public comment, none. Ordinances, none. Resolution, resolution 2017-01. Who's handling that one? Debbie? Nice to see you up here again.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. If you recall, in January, we submitted the 2015-16 audited financial statements. I noted that the audit did make three significant deficiency findings, and that I would be coming back with a resolution to address those. Just to clarify, a significant deficiency is a deficiency in internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, and yet it is important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. So that's why we bring it to your attention and have a plan to address those. The first finding had to do with a couple revenue items that were in the wrong fiscal year. The one I think that it's particularly referring to is a grant revenue. That was a reimbursement for some public work projects, and that was, the revenue was booked in the 15-16 year, and the expense was booked in the 14-15, and so we should have accrued that revenue in the prior year. So what I suggest is, as part of my year-end process, I will add a step where I consult with public works to, to review if there's any outstanding grant applications or any other revenue items that haven't come in, to be sure that we get them included in the audit, or in our statements. The second item involved a couple invoices that they wanted to look at. We couldn't locate, Mary Bono, our senior accounts payable clerk, does a really awesome job in maintaining our paperwork. The problem is that sometimes employees like me need to see invoices if we're researching something, or whatever reason, and, and sometimes invoices leave her office, and she's not always aware of it. And so in talking with her, what we've done is she's, she's established a kind of a checkout procedure, so people need to take invoices out of her office. She will note down who's taking them and what they are, and she will lock her files when she's not there, so they don't sneak off, and she'll be able to keep better track that way of where they're going. So that's the proposal for that item. And then the third item had to do with minutes, and I'll let Mr. Chandler speak to that one, because it's really not my, not my area, so.
Yes, on the third one, our city recorder and I discussed on how long it should take, what our goal is, and what we'd like to recommend to you in this resolution as the longest it should take to have the minutes ready. We've put 30 days from the time of a meeting. The goal we will be working towards is by the next meeting, you'll have your minutes. But, but in the resolution, we gave ourselves one extra meeting, just in case something arises.
Can I ask a question? Because I've never gone through the process, and Kathy, you can answer, or Ron. What does it take to create the minutes? Is it, do you go over the video? Do you go through the audio? You compile it manually? And you take notes?
Sorry, I take notes for the vote. I take the notes here, but then I go through the video again to make sure that I've captured everything correctly.
Okay. Is there, there's gotta be an automated process for this by now. A speech translation program. Is there some, something we can do to ease city recorder's burden in this area?
Yes. There, well, let me answer that with perhaps. Okay. This comes back to the, the whole question of the, of the records and the creation of records and the saving of records and so forth. Kathy and I are beginning that process now. We actually started looking at the process of what do we already have within our system, our computer programs? And we do have some that we, but we haven't been using those, so we're meeting to discuss those. And so, yes, perhaps, there is, but I don't know if it's what we have now, or if it's something we're gonna bring back to it. Basically, it's a template that Kathy can work with.
And, correct me, or tell me if I'm going the wrong direction. Are we required by a state law to produce written minutes, a synopsis of this meeting? Or could we just say, we have, it's recorded, it's there if you wanna see it? Do we even have to go through this procedure?
The, or, the public records and meetings manual says that you have to have a video recording, or an audio recording, or minutes.
Right.
And it has to be available as soon as possible. Our video recordings are available immediately after, like, within 30 minutes after our meeting. So technically, our auditors had the video, but, and...
The problem they ran into is they had to watch the video.
They had to watch the video.
They couldn't turn just to the minutes and look, a paper of the minutes and look at it. Because what they're looking for is they're looking to see that all the transactions that were supposed to be approved by the city council were approved by the city council. That's easy to do when you're looking at a paper copy of the minutes. In the case of the video, they'd have to watch it. And so that was the problem that they found, is that they were having to go back and watch those videos, rather than just looking to a set of paper minutes.
Our audit costs would go up quite a bit if they had to spend the time, because you're talking hours and hours and hours, of, you know, by the time they're done with the audit, it's about six months' worth. Well, they have to go through...
So the auditor wants it?
The auditor wants it.
I don't know if that's the only purpose for it, but, but that's why it's in our audit, is because they use it.
Okay. I'm just wondering if other municipalities have explored...
Mayor, you're, you're onto something. I'm, I'm just wondering right here, if, you know, as I heard the clerk say, we cover all three bases. So, in essence, you miss one, and, and you get an audit report. I'm, I'm wondering if this resolution should be amended to point out, you know, our corrective action for the paper minutes, but in fact, we are well in bounds by having the video and audio 30 minutes after the meeting. It, it would set a whole different tone to an audit report that, that says we, we are in compliance, but economically, it makes sense to give the auditors, you know, a paper one, so that they're not running up a bill on us.
If you wanted to do that, then the suggestion I would make in the resolution is that by the end of this fiscal year, the city recorder will submit draft written minutes within 30 days of the meeting. That way, it makes it clear that what they're looking for is the written version of the minutes, not the, not the video, not the audio.
Because I can see, I can see the value of a written one, but it's, because audio drops out, we've seen that all the time, and video drops out. So if we don't have that record, it's good to have that in the backup, but I don't know how you create that if it doesn't exist in the first place, so we're right back where we started.
Exactly. So I, I have to keep the records of the motions, and then I watch the video, and then I put it together. But we do have occasions where, as you recall, we have some videos that are not all there, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
We were asking, I think, about agenda management. Is that, how, how an agenda is formed, and do we have a process or program for it? But Ron, you mentioned records. Records management is different than agenda management.
This is all tied up. And just to be a little bit more specific, we have a program that we purchased a few years called IQM2. And over the last few weeks, we've been looking at that to see if that is sufficient, if there's parts of it that we're not using.
Is that the agenda part?
There is an agenda portion, and there are some templates that we have not been using. But I haven't finished working with the staff to determine if IQM2 is where we, is sufficient for what we need, or if we have to go beyond that. But the point that we're at right now is looking at our current program, which apparently has a module that does minutes and agendas.
Maybe we can get a report on that, because if there's something that we need to add to our budget, if it's a program that she needs or something, we should be informed of that?
We will.
I don't know who was first here. Counsel Hoagland, go ahead.
If it's regarding our audits and budgetary things, is there, is there a place where you could just record at 6:28, we approve this budget on this day, so that way, at a footnote, they can go, if it's just the video, at this point, they can see that point?
They're not just validating what we have in our statements, they're looking for things that we're missing. So for example, if, if after the, after June 30th, some catastrophe happened, and we need to note that in our foot statements, and I wanna hide it, and so I don't put it in there, they're gonna wanna, they're gonna wanna hear about it, yeah, so...
If I might add one more thing, we're talking a lot about the discussion, but having your written minutes for you to approve within 30 days is not an unreasonable thing to ask of the staff. We had this last year where, for a multitude of reasons, we fell behind. But we, as a staff, should be able to get this to you within, really, like I said, our goal is the next meeting. But we've given ourselves a little bit extra leeway, just in case. But for a staff, it's not unreasonable for you to expect your minutes within 30 days.
And I would just like to add that the auditors also look at those minutes for the motions for the contracts, and then they pull all the information on the contracts and review that, as just an example. So it is good for them to have the written minutes.
Well, that's right. I think it kinda gets back to what Counsel Hoagland was asking, though, and I think three times I've heard the same thing. There's the important motions, but we don't need the continual palaver we have up here in, in the minutes.
Right.
And it just seems pointless and a waste of time. If we have a video, if we have an audio, we're just trying to help you here as best we can, so...
We will proceed forward with that. However, you have an audit that has cited this as a deficiency, and it is something you do have to address.
Yes, indeed.
You just can't, I mean, you can contradict them and say, no, we disagree with you. But I think that, I think that having a resolution requiring the staff to have it done within 30 days is a reasonable request of the city council.
Did you have something to...
No.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think we're, any of us were arguing that point. Point is for the future, not, not where we're at now. Okay. That was my question.
So if that works for you, I'm done.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. 2017-02, a resolution declaring an emergency and exempting from formal competitive bidding the sewer boring change order.
Do we need to approve that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 thank you.
I move to approve resolution 2017-01 with the amendment that it says we'll submit written draft minutes within 30 days of the meeting. I second it.
Motion to second. Discussion? Please.
Is there an opportunity if, if there could be an assistant, an assistant city recorder or some kind of secondary position for that? Or is it typically, a city recorder is just one person and without assistance?
Depends on the size of the community and its, its staff and levels. Would be unusual to have, well, it would be unusual.
If I remember some of the discussions we had, it kinda, it's during peak periods of public records requests, you know, demands on Kathy's time, or city recorder's time, that we talked about an assistant being brought in, a quarter time or something.
We have, and this year, one of the things that we've done is that we've, we've used temps. We have a part-time employee that we increased her time for 10 hours a week in trying to catch up some of this work that's fallen behind.
And part of, I think we also address as a council, is attaching fees to different requests and ballot things, to kinda ease that burden a little bit, so, I think that'll help a little bit. Gosh darn it, was it, oh, the timing. We're saying 30 days. Is that an appropriate time measure, or should it be the second meeting after the meeting?
I would just say 30 days.
Okay. And what happens if you don't have it?
No, it's...
Well, we're passing a resolution saying you gotta do something. If you don't do it, what happens?
Ultimately, you would take that up with me as we discuss my performance.
Okay. Fair enough. Good. Any further discussion? I guess we can just...
Maybe, maybe I do. I, I'd just like to make sure that if we're asking her to do something, that she has the tools to, to do what we ask. And maybe she does, maybe she doesn't, but it's, I would hope that we would make certain that there's a path for success. And I guess my question was, we have the, the programs that we've been using, but we haven't used the, the software that would automate much of those. Will that, do we see any benefit? I mean, is there...
I think so.
...better from doing that?
Yeah, I think so. Give me just a little more time to work through that, but I think so. It's a module that, that we have not been using. We need to, I need to discuss it with our staff to make sure it will work for us. If, if we have something that'll work, and we don't have to go buy anything new, then great, we're, we're in good shape. That's what we're trying to determine.
So will that be done within 30 days, that module? Or will there be a, a slack time that she's gonna learn how to use that new tool?
Oh, sure, yeah. There will be time and training that will be given to everybody. But in the meantime, as I mentioned, we have, I have authorized another employee to increase, a part-time employee, to increase their hours to work with Kathy to catch up.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none? Resolution carries. Okay. Resolution 2017-02, a resolution declaring an emergency and exempting from formal competitive bidding the sewer boring change order to a Schooner Creek utility boring contract currently under construction pursuant to OAR 1370490150 and LCMC 2.05.080.A.
This is a extension of your previous meeting, in which you approved doing a change order for the undergrounding of the sewer line underneath Schooner Creek. This, as our attorney had mentioned two weeks ago, provides the, the letter for me stating why we need to do this. That's both in your staff report, and it is also built into the resolution itself, identifying why we are doing this. And then, and, and just, just ratifying the direction we started with last week. Now, I can go into the more detail if you'd like, but if you're ready to move, this resolution's ready to go.
I'm ready. Counsel? Yeah? Okay. So I still need a motion on this one?
I moved to approve resolution 2017-02. I need to read that second.
Motion to second. Discussion?
I would like to. It's, number two, it says emergency contracts under $100,000. It does not come before city council, as in number three, that it does come to city council?
That's right. If it's under $100,000, that falls within my authority. If it's over $100,000, it has to go to you.
Seems like a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
Well, I know, but I mean...
Stay close to your mic. Thanks. Seems like a lot of money. I heard that part. Moving away while you're talking, but the next sentence. Which is one of the things we're gonna discuss. If we go to an automated system, we've gotta make sure we're near our mics at all times. Okay, is that it?
The, Mayor, just as a clarification, the recommendation from the attorney was an additional exemption, you know, in, in the staff report. So declaring an emergency isn't a necessity? Is that, do I understand that?
Well, it's, under the, under the, the three reasons why you have to have, why you can declare an emergency, yes, it fits under those as, as necessary for us to declare an emergency in order to make this change order. Am I following you, or I'm missing something?
Yeah. And let me try. What I understand is, we must have found, and I'm embarrassed that I can't remember last meeting, but we must have found other reasons to do what we did, was to make the change order. The way the, should the city council go duck and approve an additional exemption, to me, that reads we were finding more than one reason why we could do the change order.
That's how I remember it. It's just a redundancy precaution there.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay. So, so this declaring an emergency isn't really needed, it's an addition.
It's a safety valve.
An addition.
Yes.
So, it, no harm if it doesn't pass?
We will still go forward.
That's what I wanted to hear. Because I, I don't have a big problem with it, but it just seems like we're really stretching the, the line on declaring an emergency.
Actually, as, as Mr. Appatello talked about last week, it's really kind of an abundance of caution, and we now have two reasons that are set of just one.
Right. Okay. Because the question did come up of our authority to do a no, you know, a non-competitive bid on this, and, yeah, or an award, rather, so...
Again, I, I think we're, we're gray on, you know, the risk of loss. Okay, there's a financial difference, we, and if, if that's the, the loss, and I, it just seems as, I'm set to go with it. I just think we were really, it's not what I would deem an emergency in that context. I'm glad they gave us definitions.
Right. And I agree, I, the red flags go up immediately when I hear emergency. It's almost a way to circumvent the public, you know, input cycle. But since it's already approved, and we're really just...
Right. We're adding to it. That's...
Just the middle side of it, yeah.
I guess that's what I want the public to hear, too, that it, this doesn't make or break it.
Right. And just, maybe just a quick refresher. Why are we doing this? What's the project?
ODOT, around the end of the year, will start rebuilding, or putting a cathodic protection ODOT, around the end of the year, will start rebuilding or putting a cathodic protection on the Schooner Creek Bridge. We have a sewer line that is attached to that bridge. In order to remove that while they're working, then replace it, would cost about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We at this time have a contractor that is doing a boring work for our water line under the Schooner Creek. And through a change order process, they will do this work for, I think the price is four hundred and some odd thousand dollars. It's, it's in the, and, and they can do that because they're onsite and because they can work within the easement that they already have for the water line. If we were to come back and try to do this after they left, we'd have to obtain another easement. We'd have to go through the process of getting approvals through this and, and it would be more expensive. So, it's not necess, we would not necessarily be able to get it done within the time that's necessary when ODOT goes forward. Plus, it would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more expensive to do it.
Great, okay.
Any more? I do, can you list something that has happened in the past that would meet all three of A, B, and C?
Of another time we've had an emergency?
Something that would fall under the city declaring something an emergency. I just, you.
I think I'm gonna need a little help from Stephanie on this, because we really haven't done that since I've been here, so.
One of the last ones, quite frankly, was when Forty-Eighth Street water was, the street was slipping and the water main was there. And we needed to immediately take action, spend money to shore that up, otherwise we were out of water.
Right. That, that happened at night, or was it during the day? I don't recall.
We took action?
We're just gonna lose the water.
Right.
We took action the next day, we had a special city council meeting and, and took action.
I mean, I, I understand if it's like two in the morning and something breaks and ruptures and there's water, it's gonna take away, you know, some, somebody's house or something, I get that. It's just when there's, it's during business hours or something, how we can go around the regular process, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
If there was a case in which there was an emergency more traditional than we think of, huge water line break, tsunami, you know, whatever it may be, then, then we would be calling for an immediate city council. That could be in person, that could be electronically, in order to be able to get a resolution passed that allows us to go forward with these kind of projects. Now, Counsel Hogan, you had asked about the hundred thousand dollars. Currently under my authority to, to sign off, the authority limit that I have is actually a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But I have voluntarily backed that down to seventy-five thousand dollars. So, any purchase up to seventy-five thousand dollars, I have the authority to sign off on that, anything above that has to go to you.
Okay.
I think this company's a good company and they're gonna do a good job for us for less. But, having said that, this is not an emergency and I just think it owes a little to our credibility that when we declare something an emergency, and it's really not, even though technically we can do it, I, I'm, nobody's, no bad guys here, I just, I'm uncomfortable with calling that an emergency. And if we can do it without calling it an emergency and it still goes through, that's, I think, the proper channel for it to work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think there might be a broader or different definition to the word emergency. Because I think when people say emergency, just in general, you think about an emergency, a broken arm or something, get to the hospital. And I think on some of these larger projects, I think emergency can mean a lot of things besides a broken pipe. I think it means that we have the ability like we do now to utilize a contractor that's onsite already. We save a lot of time and we also save a lot of money by, by adding this to their contract. And I say that from a position of not being in favor of, of changing, of change orders, I don't really like them. But I just think in this instance, I think the definition of emergency is somewhat different than, than an emergency, you know.
Well, I think the thing to remember, we've already approved it, we've already said it's okay, we're going ahead with what we already talked about. This is just a little layer over the top, so we are not declaring an emergency per se, but we're saying this exists on top of what we've done, correct?
Well, the answer to that is that the, the state, the state has a definition for emergency, okay? Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that's the same thing that you think of when you say an emergency. The question is, can you meet that definition? And the first one states, there is a substantial risk of loss, damage, or unnecessary, undesirable disruption, or interruption, or degradation of public facilities or services, or a threat to the public health or safety. Now, as it pertains to that section, I have written in my report, in this case, there is a substantial lot, risk of loss and unnecessary disruption or undesirable degradation of the public facilities. Specifically, in addition to the estimated six hundred and fifty thousand dollars expense to use a temporary bypass sewer line during the entire ODOT Bridge project, the temporary line and the restrictions on the attachment to the bridge during the ODOT work expose the city and its residents to increased risk of sewer spills in this environmentally sensitive area. While the ODOT project is planned for the fall, there is insufficient time to perform competitive bidding of a completely new project, together with all the ancillary environmental permitting and negotiation of new easements from the state and the private owners. Accordingly, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar bypass expense would not be avoided if the additional boring was competitively bid as a new project. To avoid the expense and the risk of the extended bypass operation, use of the existing mobilized contractor onsite for an additional utility boring, including using existing permits and easements, will remedy the emergency situation. So, even though it's different from what you normally think of, an earthquake, hillside coming down, a ruptured water line is spewing twenty-five feet in the air, I do believe we have met the state's standards for saying this is an emergency. And I would agree with our attorney that having this, as well as what you did two weeks ago, is a good thing to do.
Any further discussion? Several called.
Counselor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Judy Tasper?
Yes.
And Susan Walkie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent questions, everybody. Getting involved in that discussion. Okay, we are rolling towards the end here, don't come up here, we're almost done. No. Special Order Business, Letter of Support for Department of Land Conservation and Development, LCD, or DLCD, Grant Proposal to Fund Tsunami Land Use Resilience and Preparation Work.
This is a request to the council to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for a grant request. The Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development is applying for a grant from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration in their, in their coastal resilience program to fund the Oregon Department of Geology and Mineral Industries to do a, a beat the wave study of Lincoln City, where the purpose of that is to figure out the time and distance for, basically, for everybody in the city, how much time they have to get out of the way of the tsunami. That will help with our own planning for tsunami resilience. And, you know, it could identify, like as it did in Seaside, where there's a critical infrastructure need that they were able to, to, to deal with as a result of the study. The work would be done by the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, I'm sure there will be some city staff time involved in answering questions from them or what have you, but I, I think it will be relatively minimal. And as I said, the, in, I know in Seaside, it proved a very, very, very important project. I think they've also done it in Tillamook as well, so we would be the next one to get it.
Questions?
I just have one. If, if we do approve this and if the mayor does sign the letter and you send it off and you get in the queue for this to be done, do we, will that mean that we will wait to do any tsunami getting ready caches in the neighborhoods?
Sorry?
I'm just asking that if this is approved, if the letter's approved?
Right.
And if the mayor signs it and you get in the queue for getting this done, if Lincoln City gets this study done, then how does that fit in with the schedule of moving forward with the city getting ready for an earthquake tsunami like the caches in the neighborhoods?
Well, our, our tsunami preparedness is, is always ongoing, a dynamic situation, so, I mean, this wouldn't even start until two thousand and eighteen.
Right, so you won't wait.
But, without this, it won't start ever. And, or it's, or it'll be some, sometime much further out. So, we're all, we'll always be updating and revising as better information comes along.
This is only one part of our preparation. We will continue to.
Ron, near the mic.
This is only one part of our preparation for emergencies, and we will continue to do other work as well, besides this. So, in other words, we're not going to put off our emergency preparation until two thousand and eighteen.
My only question, and we had this discussion with the, the last OCZMA meeting, is once we begin these processes, do we run any risk of getting caught up in bureaucracies about what we will have to do and what we won't have to do and?
No, I don't think it would require, will, the product will not be, here's the results and city, you now have to do X, Y, and Z. It's just, here's the results, then you choose what to do, if, if anything.
Sure. All right.
I've moved to approve or authorize the mayor to sign such a letter?
Second. Motion to second, discussion? Any or none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any or none, motion carries, thank you, Richard. All right, we are rocking and rolling. City manager?
Nothing.
Okay. Actions, if any, based on executive session? None today. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Up, 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 we had to start, what, up, all right, you ladies, sorry, Gail, you got beat to the punch here. What'd you get for sitting in the back?
Georgia roll off eleven forty-two northeast Lakewood. I'm gonna be a squeaky wheel with Mr. Chandler. For those of you who are not familiar with my previous requests, we have a number of cement dividers between the north-south lanes in, on one oh one or helping to define a left-hand turn. And unfortunately, as I age, my eyes don't get quite as good and they kind of blend in with all of the macadam and become invisible. So, I'm asking again if Mr. Chandler would do what he could to get some yellow paint around the edges so that they are visible?
We have not forgotten, we're waiting for a little bit of dry weather.
Oh, well, that, that I can't do for you, but I do understand, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up again, and thank you.
August.
Yeah, and thank you, Ron.
Good evening, counsel, I just wanted to take a minute and apprise you all of the Ninth Annual Lincoln City Half Marathon and Ten K, which is taking place this Sunday. This year, our venue is Boris Field, where the race started nine years ago. Runners and walkers will go south on High School Drive and then on Southeast Forty-Eighth, and then out Schooner Creek Road and back. I brought you all a sticker so you can proudly show off Lincoln City Half Marathon, thirteen point one miles, even if you don't do it. We don't have shirts yet because we wait to order them until we know how many people are coming and what sizes to get. We're expecting about two hundred and fifty runners and walkers this year. And they'll each get a medal when they finish the event. We're very excited to have everyone come to town. Historically, about eighty-five percent of participants are from outside of Lincoln County. And about eighty percent of those participants come the day before to pick up their package at the community center. So, it's a nice little revenue boost for the community in a kind of an otherwise quiet winter weekend. We also share a lot of our proceeds with the nonprofit groups that help with this event. And this year, they include the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, Lincoln City Kiwanis, several TAF sports team, including the girls' golf team and the track and field team. The senior parents will also be out helping. And then, North Lincoln County CERT assists us by providing course, safety, and support. And Lincoln City Public Works this year is going to put up a sign on Schooner Creek a couple of days ahead of time, warning motors that there'll be runners and walkers on the road ahead of the race. So, we're just really excited to put on this event again, and you're welcome to come by, cheer on the runners and walkers. It's really a fun event to see everyone come together for this and to show off Lincoln City a little bit, so.
Okay, while we have you here, if, if nobody minds, can you give us your thoughts on the, lack of a better word, the Jumbotron? How's that working out?
Well, we're still learning the system, it's pretty complicated. I'm, my staff and I are getting a little bit better every time we do a PowerPoint that shows on the Jumbotron on a regular basis. We're now incorporating some slides from the Visitor and Convention Bureau with our slideshow, so they're advertising their events as well. I recently unearthed a video, a VHS tape, nineteen eighty, from the grand opening of the community center and pool. And so, now I'm working to get that video up and running on the Jumbotron as well. We do have a family movie night planned for Community Days Week. We have licensing rights for Finding Dory, and so we'll be marketing that and showing that soon on the Jumbotron. But it's a, it's a work in progress and we're working a little bit more every week to learn it.
Okay, and do we have the cameras incorporated yet?
We don't have cameras yet, but you'll be seeing that on my proposed budget for the next fiscal year.
And then, we were discussing using it for swimming competitions.
We have used it for scorekeeping. We've had one age group meet and two high school meets so far. The problem, we ran into a glitch with the swim team's software, not talking at first to the Jumbotron software. We think we have that resolved now, it was a couple of outdated cords on the swim team's side. It'll next be used at the large spring invitational that the swim club is putting on, which I believe is in the middle of April. We also hope to use it when we host the Regional Mate ROV, which is Remote Operative Vehicle Competition, which is also in May, or, I'm sorry, April, it's the last Saturday in April. We hope, they will bring videographers who will be filming and we hope to show it real-time live on the Jumbotron as the competition is taking place.
And overall impressions from guests?
They like it, it just adds a really nice element to the pool, even with just the slideshow going. I try to change it up every couple of weeks so something new is, is showing and people walk in the door and they go, wow! So, we just, you know, hope to get more proficient at what it can do.
So, a success?
I would say yes, yeah, a work in progress, but I think it's a success so far.
You can feel the same way, Ron?
I do, I do, there's much more we can do with it, but yes, I would agree with, with Gail on this. I might add that on the slide presentation that's going through, it's not just, it's not just the pool or the community center that's being advertised. Ed has stepped into it as well and he is using it for some of the other activities in the community.
And I think we talked briefly at the, the grand opening about the possibility of revenue, renting that out, is that something that is legally possible?
We haven't really discussed that at this point, but yes, that is something that could be done.
Okay.
Mr. Chandler, while, while Gail's here, I wonder if I could talk you into maybe writing a letter to one of our, our only state senator and let him know what a nice addition that's been to our community pool?
I would be happy to do that.
That would, that would be terrific.
I'm sensing a backstory that I don't know, didn't approve it, didn't like it?
It seemed to show up on a campaign against his candidate.
Okay. That's important information to pass along, so, okay.
So, anyway, I should add, it's not too late to register if any of you just have an inkling to run thirteen point one miles or what. We also have a ten K, which is six point two miles included in the race. You can go online to GetMeRegistered.com to register until midnight Friday, or you can register anytime in person at the community center.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Ron, then is that, that kind of information is tied in with our new Visitor and Convention Bureau website? So, I, I know we talked about incorporating different events, it ties to lodging and the like, is that?
You mean like the races?
Yeah, yeah.
We have a cross that where, where the recreation activities are being advertised on OregonCoast dot, or?
That would seem a nice tie-in, that if you're gonna come and register, you can register on that. register on that site, and then here's the housing, the combination for you. Just, I already-
I will, I will bring that up.
All right, thanks. Okay, um, anyone else?
It's Jay Roloff, 1142 Northeast Lakewood. Uh, so often, uh, residents come up and, and, uh, are critical of people on the council or what the council is doing, or critical of the city manager. Uh, I would like to break a precedent, and I'd like to compliment the city manager and the council on the work that they've allowed the Visitor Convention Bureau to do in creating that film, Seven Miles of Smiles. When I was here at the last meeting, I went to the website, I got a, I took it off the website, I've sent it to different people over the years who've come and been house guests in my home and just have had a wonderful time, Cascadehead, they've hiked, or the beach or whatever. And I just sent it to them, and I said, "Here's something that might rekindle some old memories." I want to tell you, the responses that I got back, that struck a chord of remembrance. And, um, I think it's a great, great piece, I really do. I hope it's really used to its, its fullest. And I thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I think we've run out of citizens. Okay.
Vocal ones, anyway.
Uh, announcals, announcements, announcements or comments by city council?
I have one, um, which is, I just wanted to continue with the discussion we were having about Pacific Power and their willingness to come. Um, the regional manager, um, has offered to come sometime in the spring and, um, be here to give a presentation, um, and she has asked, uh, so those of you out there watching, um, if you have any questions specifically to, like tips and what you can do to save on your, um, on your electric bill, especially after this very cold winter, that she would like to know those questions ahead of time, and then she can bring answers and, and tips for that. And you can send them to me, um, dhinton@lincolncity.org, or to perhaps Ron, city manager, either one of us, and, um-
Your, your address, Ron?
Pardon me?
Your city address? Your, no, your email.
R Chandler. Oh, oh, R Chandler at LincolnCity.org.
And then she can come prepared, and hopefully we'll get some good questions for her.
Yeah, anyone else?
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Um, you know, we talked about the eclipse and everything like that the other day, and I, it just doesn't seem like we're very well-prepared, in my opinion. Um, I know that we had a lot of work done and stuff like that, and, um, you know, we have 40 toilets, and they're, now their depot bay was saying that they think between 50 and 100,000 people, and I think that it behooves us to be more prepared than less prepared. And, you know, we were talking about, do we want to market it, do we not want to market it? And I think people, I don't know if it's understood that this is the first place on earth that this will happen, not the first place in the United States. This is the first place on earth that this eclipse is going to be able to be seen. So, I think that, that alone is gonna get a lot of people here, and, um, I, I, it doesn't feel like we're ready to me. It doesn't feel like we're prepared, and, you know, it's less than six months away, or eight mo, August, so, um, you know, I think if, if, if we treat it like an emergency, you know, an emergency is, you don't know, you don't know, you don't know, and then bam, it hits. If you treat it like, maybe like a concert or something that you're looking forward to, if you shift the, the energy a little bit, I think it might be better. And so, um, I don't know what I said before, as far as like things that we can do. I know we were talking about the high school and things like that, school is not going to be in session. You know, you can, if, if there are talks with the school district, um, using the bleachers because it's gonna, those bleachers face east, you know? And not only that, but building more bleachers in the field, or using the old schools, you know, locations, and having very specific places to park and very specific, you know, we will shuttle you to these locations to view the thing, and it will be a great view, and you don't have to panic, and you don't have to worry that this is, we, Lincoln City, will take care of this for you. Come love it here, you know? Um, I, it just didn't, to me, it didn't sit right, you know, that I want to, you know, I want people to know that we're prepared, that we want you here, that you can come here and, and view this magnificent thing that's, I don't know when the last time it's been, but, um, you know, I'm looking forward to it, you know, and you can tie in with the school, you know, you can have this, you know, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts provide food or things, you know, little things like that to really promote, you know, to, to benefit from this, and I think it's a great opportunity to, for us, us, Lincoln City, to come together, and, you know, we're talking about this, come together, come together, come together, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for everybody that lives here to be like, "Yes, yes, we will, yes, we're gonna have 100,000 people here. What can we do? Let's, let's, let's be this time to shine." And so, I just, you know, and treating it like an emergency didn't sound like we want it to happen. It wasn't a very positive image in my mind, and I, I, I would like it to not be so negative because it's amazing. We're gonna, we are gonna be here for that, and so I wanna really, how can we make that happen?
Can I ask a question? Sure. Um, yeah, just so I'm clear, when you say it doesn't seem like we're ready, are you, are you talking about the promotional side, the crowd?
All of it.
Well, that's a lot.
Yeah.
There's the traffic side, the public safety side. Um, do we have a committee? And I hate to use that word, but do we have a committee within the city that is, besides public safety, that's addressing this?
Yes. Um, uh, well, the committee begins with staff members, and we have a, we have a group of staff members that are all, that are all working on this. We recently met with about 40 other organizations, um, to discuss, uh, our, our role and coordination with that. Um, based on that, we're now in the process of finalizing, we'll be finalizing in the next two days, uh, that action plan of everything that is taking place for the, for the eclipse. Now, you have to understand why I have used the term as an emergency. Again, um, definitions are important. I don't use that in the context of an emergency that all of a sudden, boom, it happens and we, we don't know what to do. I use it in the context of the organization that is created through the national, or through, through FEMA, uh, when you deal with incidents. And, uh, and those incidents require, uh, the coordination with multiple organizations and with, uh, activating, uh, emergency centers and so forth. So, in the context of an emergency, it's not an emergency, but the way you plan for it, uh, it's the same way that you do plan for an emergency. You're activating all of the different per, uh, people that are associated with an emergency to deal with it. The difference is, the, the real difference is, is that in an emergency, we don't know when it's happening. This one, I use that not in the sense that it's a bad thing's happened, but it's, it's the way to, it's the way to plan for it, using the, using FEMA's, um, well-run, well-documented, um, preparations.
So, then, would it be appropriate with Councilor, uh, Hoagland's bouquet to make him a liaison between you and us? So, I mean, it sounds like you want to get involved, and you, you got the energy and the interest to, to do that and to kind of spearhead that on behalf of the council?
Sure, that would be fine.
If that works for you. Yeah. But I think that'd be good. Well, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. I, I, that's one, that's one option. I, I guess I would, I always ask, you know, someone like Councilor Hoagland raises the issue, what would make you feel confident? And I, I think that's the question, because all of us, um, need to feel confident that it's happening to the level we expect. So, you know, my question, counselor, would be, what would make you feel better? Um, because it's clearly a lack of communication of what has already happened. So, do you want their three-ring binders, um, their committee, like committee reports? What would, what would help?
From what I have been given and shown, and when people ask me, "What are we going to do?", and I say, "Well, we're gonna order 40 toilets and hope for the best." It's not really, doesn't really pan out that we're prepared.
See, that, that's what I was kind of gathering. I think that's why working closely with Ron would be helpful to, to ease that, and because when I've talked with Jenny Damaris and about emergency planning, I'm pretty confident about it, what I've heard from the chief and, and everyone else, I'm pretty confident where we're going, but there is some components that are still, you know, flagging out there.
I'd like to add to that. I attended the coordination meeting, um, it's very well-coordinated. I was really impressed with, especially how Ron kept things on target, um, with, um, 40 people and all their input. I think it's very well-organized. I do, however, worry about the number of porta-potties as well. I spoke to a neighbor this weekend, and he manages and owns three farms, and he has, he said, "I have 28 porta-potties for his farms." He said, "Then you have 40?" Anyway, so then, the number of porta-potties is resonating with a lot of people, um, including me. But I think as far as the, um, as far as the how to manage that many people, where they're gonna go, um, about Ed was putting together, or someone was putting together a, a map and information on, there's a website for the, for Lincoln City, and there's a lot of information out there, maybe perhaps it needs to be more broadly, um, broadcast so, you know, that even you should be up to speed on what-
Right.
Right, that's my point. But, um, but there's been a lot of work done, except for the porta-potties.
And no, get me wrong, I'm not just, please don't misunderstand that I'm saying that you guys didn't do anything, or that it's not prepared or anything. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that the, the general feeling that's been coming out and back to me. So, please, please, let me make that clear.
The easiest thing for me to do at this point is, on Friday, when I send you my weekly report, I will send you the action plans that we have put together for this.
That'd be great.
And that will get you up to speed.
Well, I think in the spirit of volunteerism, we could have the city print signs that say, "You can use my bathroom," and we'll put it in the windows of all our homes.
I, I have one more comment. Perhaps this might be an opportunity to do a mailer to all our residents, just a real simple mailer with the website address and be prepared for, not, not everybody is as excited as some of us for this event, and that might be a way to advertise where they can get more information and that it's coming, and do your grocery shopping a week or two in advance.
Anyone else? Yes?
Um, yeah, well, last week, we were talking about evaluations, and, uh, Councilor Hoagland mentioned about a rubric for, for Ron, who is a many talented and faceted gentleman and wonderful, um, manager. But I was wondering if we could have, um, because I'm new and I want to do a good job back here. I think there are standard, um, criteria and, uh, council policy directives that have been created. If we could maybe have a copy of those, um, gives us a little background or your, your contract or job description. I want to be sure that we are, um, consistently following the, uh, council-approved evaluation form. So, if there are modifications that need to be done to the form, um, I guess we need to address that prior to your evaluation.
And I don't think there's any issue with the new councilors getting a copy of, or a blank copy of the one they've used. I think we've already sent, oh, you already got one.
We've had that.
Yeah.
But I don't think you have a copy of my contracts, so I'll send that with you as well.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put together some more material with-
Okay, that'd be great.
Along with HR and send that to you.
Anybody else?
Got a little bit.
All right.
Need some help on this one. Um, a couple of shout-outs, uh, City Center Motel. If you haven't looked at it lately, you should. They've done a wonderful job of, of fixing it up, and, um, they're, little urban renewal people, you know, doing a good job. Uh, second of all, there's a new restaurant in town. Gosh, I can't think of the name. It's on 10th Street, it's, uh, Thai, perhaps?
Sushi place?
Su- su- sushi place.
Where the Jack and Wacky was?
Yeah. And my wife and I ate there, it was wonderful, so if you haven't tried that, I would, I would strongly suggest it. And then, um, Michelle and Karen moved out of the ventuary into downtown Ocean Lake, where they have a little bakery there. It's just cute as a button, and their food's delicious, and, uh, if you haven't tried them out, it, they, they look great from the street, and they taste great when you walk in. Uh, what a wonderful contribution. And I was gonna give that after Urban Renewal, but I, I forgot, so.
That's the Inspirations 101, right? Bakery there?
Yes.
Old Coolin Bakery.
Yeah, depends on-
So, as we, as we push along on our, you know, on our remodeling things and getting things better, we have lots of individuals that are just taking the ball and really making outstanding contributions.
There's one I don't think we should, want to forget, is, uh, someone has moved into the old space in the TAF District in the Chevron Station.
Yeah.
Called Crispy Chicken?
It's called, oh, that, oh, the actual gas station, oh, yeah. There's another restaurant coming in right there.
Oh, the Indian, the old Indian place? No, but inside the gas station, yeah, they, Crispy Chicken, something like that, yeah, crunchy chicken, yeah. Yeah, nice little place, nice, nice folks, I've met them and wish them all the well, all the best. Anyone else?
There's another one inside the South Gas Station, South Shell Station, they do beef jerky. They have all kinds of beef jerky by the pound.
Oh.
Inside the South Shell.
Buy my gas there, but I don't go there.
Oh, and the Wiener Dog guy is moving into where, what was the name of that is?
Pumpkinberry. The wrapped bacon?
Yeah.
Bacon, oh, that's good. So, gone from a cart to a brick and mortar, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, well done. Does any, and I guess, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, but anyone know what happened with Pumpkinberry? Is it, is it an illness, or did we lose? No?
Did you ever eat there?
So, so next time we have council-
But I know they were, they were-
Well, I'll be wearing shades because the future's so bright.
Um, let's see, okay, uh, I think the only thing I've got to talk about is, we've got the State and the City address tomorrow, um, that's at 11:45, begins at the Cultural Center, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I'm sure that if Mr. Apocello was here, he'd tell you not to go, um, because we'd have a quorum, so I'm gonna leave that up to you guys to decide, uh, how you want to handle that. Um, uh, what else we got?
So, Mr. Mayor, so did you say that you, that we have a quorum going now? I, to your, to your address, to the, um-
I'll, I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, I, I know exactly what he'd say, because there will be city issues discussed, and so if there are four of us there, kind of, sort of, weirdly, technically, you've got a meeting going on.
So, I'm curious, do we have a quorum that's going? I've signed up.
We've got one person going. I'm gonna be there, that's two. So, you can go one more. You can all show up, you just roll the dice, I'm just telling you what I know what he'd say, so. Fight it out. It's gonna be ultimately boring.
Boring.
The over and under is, uh, three minutes on how soon I cry, so we'll see.
[laughing]
Um, all right, um, we have a work session coming up March 6th, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that is to cover, uh, the library, the community center, future work meetings, and I think a couple other things we have, small things. Okay, council's scheduled for a group photo, 5:30 Tuesday at, where is it? At, at the Cultural Center, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, Cultural Center. We won't discuss anything except to have a smile, pretty. Um, I think that's all I've got before the next meeting. Um, gosh darn it.
Yep.
Oh, I'll, I'll talk to you about the ODOT thing, we're gonna talk about that later. Okay, all right, uh, if there's nothing else, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. Mics are off.